October 1st at 8:30 PM. There's also additional rebroadcast times that you can look up on demand. Before we proceed to the main program, as your elections official, I want to share some important information with you. The last day to register to vote for the November 6th election is October 22nd. So if you've moved, changed your name, or wish to change your party affiliation, you can update your registration or register online at registertovote.ca.gov, or you can pick up a registration form. We have some at the back here at City Hall, or at the post office, or one of our libraries. I want to let you know that the November election will be an all-male ballot vote center election. What does that mean? That means that voters can either vote or drop off their ballots at any vote center in San Mateo County. In Redwood City, there'll be three vote centers at the following locations. One at the county assessor clerk recorder's office at 555 County Center, one at the community's Community Activities Building at 1400 Roosevelt Avenue, and one at Fair Oaks Community Center at 2600 Middlefield Road. City Hall will also serve as a mail ballot drop-off beginning the week of October 8th. We'll have our black ballot box here for you to drop off your ballots. The county is always looking for people to lend a hand at the vote centers, so if you want to play a vital role in the elections process and get, receive compensation to do so, you can contact the county elections office at the information on your screen. Now, it's my pleasure to present Lisa Conrad from the League of Women Voters, who will be moderating tonight's forum, and who will introduce you to our council candidates.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County and the Redwood City Women's Club...
Oh, thank you. Guess we'll start over. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County and the Redwood City Women's Club, I welcome the candidates, and especially you, the audience, to this free public forum for Redwood City City Council. I'm Lisa Conrad, a member of the LWV of South San Mateo County, and I will be your moderator this evening. A little bit about the League. League of Women Voters is a national political organization of women and men. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties. We do work to influence public policy through advocacy and education. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in your government at every level. We help voters gain fair and unbiased information in order to make an informed decision on Election Day, November 6th. In addition to this forum, I encourage you to visit the California State League's election website. It's voterseedge.org. It has information about all of the candidates and measures on your particular ballot. You just write in your address and it brings up your ballot. So to begin with, I like to ask everybody to turn the sound off on their cell phones. And written questions have already been submitted in abundance, but if we ask the questions from the audience to be written, and submit your questions on a three-by-five card available from the volunteers who are holding their hands up here. So, audience, please raise your hand if you'd like a card, and when you've finished writing your question, please hold the card up and the volunteer will come and collect it. We use this format. It allows us to cover as wide a range of issues as possible, and it avoids questions that are speeches and also redundancy. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. Joanne Brugeman, also a League volunteer, is in front, and she'll be the timekeeper. She'll hold up signs at one minute, at 30 seconds, and a stop sign, and I ask the candidates to please try not to exceed your time limit. Another League volunteer, Margaret Marshall, is sorting questions to help us avoid redundancy. And again, this event is being recorded and is live streaming now, and it'll be replayed on local public TV. Access the recording by going to either Penn TV, or the League of Women Voters' South San Mateo website, or, again, voterseedge.org. So we have seven candidates running for three seats on the Redwood City City Council. The candidates are Christina Umhofer, Diana Ready, Giselle Hale, Rick Hunter, Jason Galasides, and Diane Howard, and Ernie Schmidt. The candidates' two-minute opening statements will be delivered in an order that was determined by them drawing numbers from a bag. The closing statements will be delivered in that reverse order from the opening statements, and the questions from the audience will be answered in a rotating order. This is our standard League format that we try, we use to try to keep it as equitable as possible. So please write questions on the cards available, pass it to the volunteers, and we'll get started. We'll begin the opening statements with Christina Umhofer.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. I was raised by a single mom. That's a fact, but that fact doesn't define who I am. What defines who I am is what I did with the situation. When my parents separated, I was one years old. My mom moved my sister and I to an apartment on Hudson Street, where we met Sue, also newly separated, and with two daughters, Shannon and Michelle. A few years later, Yasha and her daughter Maria moved into 1528 Hudson Street. These three moms collectively raised the five of us. Together, we celebrated the 49ers' first Super Bowl win, watched the Redwood City Fourth of July Parade, and watched the Olympic torch pass through Redwood City at five points. The micro-community that we shared together on Hudson Street was the first sense of community I had ever experienced, and I am truly blessed that it happened in my hometown of Redwood City. When I was 10, I watched my mom be served with an eviction notice, and in that moment, the community I knew was forever altered. This experience had an unbelievable profound impact and shaped my outlook throughout the years since. As an adult, I was blessed to own and subsequently sell an apartment building in Redwood City, a building that was very similar to the one I grew up in. When we wanted to sell, I made sure that we sold to a nonprofit to keep our tenants in our, in their home and in their community. Regardless of what the outcome is in this election, my heart is with Redwood City. My heart is with this community, and my heart will be here.
Thank you. Diana Ready?
So I'm Diana Ready, and I'm running for city council. I'm a lifelong resident of Redwood City. My parents were teachers. My father became principal of Menlo Atherton during the turbulent '60s. He had a passion for social justice, and I embraced that, that passion. My values continue his legacy for social and economic justice. My working career was with the Sequoia Union High School District, and I advocated for children, parents, and staff in that role. I was also a community leader whose team literally saved the health plan of San Mateo, the agency that provides services for residents in San Mateo County. Our team also gave shape to Heart, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, which built hundreds of affordable homes throughout San Mateo County and provides first-time homebuyer loans for teachers and others who are essential to our community. I worked for Housing Leadership Council as a community builder, working for, advocating for housing policies in San Mateo County. I also served as a member of the city's Housing and Leaders, Housing and Human Concerns Committee. Five years ago, I founded Fair Rents for Redwood City in response to the massive displacement and housing insecurity that low and middle, middle-income residents were experiencing. My life has always been in public service. I've talked with residents throughout Redwood City who believe they have not been heard. I'm a community organizer, and I commit, I am committed to seeking community involvement before major decisions are made in the future.
Thank you. And Giselle Hale?
I love Redwood City. Redwood City is the place where my husband and I bought our first home together. It's the place where I became a mother to two beautiful little girls, and someday, when I'm long gone, and they're old and gray, they'll talk about this place, their hometown of Redwood City. It's so special to me. This town has given us so much, and I am inspired to give back. But before I share with you my vision for the future of Redwood City, I want to tell you a little bit about my past. I was raised by a single mom, and we struggled with poverty, visiting food banks, taking food stamps. Meanwhile, my husband was a foster child, later passed around his extended family due to their struggles with poverty. We could have been left behind had it not been for the helping hand we received from our extended community who cared for us. Today in Redwood City, I see people being left behind, and I want to reach out the same hand that I was received so many years ago to help. And that's what I would work to create as a member of the city council, a place where people of all ages, all backgrounds, and all income levels can thrive. So I'm excited to get to work on the issues that matter to Redwood City residents, like housing affordability, reducing the time we spend in traffic, preserving the neighborhoods we hold dear, and advocating for our public schools. I have exactly what it takes to be successful in this role on day one. As a planning commissioner, I have sat at this very dais, listened to all sides, and made hard decisions. As a businesswoman with an MBA, I have built budgets, built successful teams, and I have had to grow revenues, all skills this next city council will need as we face an unfunded pension liability. And finally, local government, it's a team sport. You don't get anything done without four votes. As a former NCAA Division I athlete, I know how to play on a team. So for those reasons and more, I humbly ask for your vote in November, and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rick Hunter?
I don't know how many people can remember exactly where they were on their 10th wedding anniversary, but I can. We were in a minivan with three young sons and a dog, and we were moving to Redwood City. Little did we know at that time how much we would come to love Redwood City, the place that has been our home for the last 21 years, and hopefully forever. I grew up in New Jersey. My wife Naomi is from Chicago. We met and we got married in Los Angeles, but Redwood City is the place that we truly call home. Once our sons started school, we became very involved. My volunteer, my volunteer service began very oddly, as I was elected to be the treasurer of the North Star Parent Club, even though I'd never applied. But after that, I served in many roles with our schools. I managed Little League. I created a youth running program. And then I got involved on the boards of several wonderful local nonprofit organizations. The first was the Sequoia YMCA, and then I served a number of years as the treasurer and board member of the Redwood City Education Foundation. That service led me to apply to be on the Redwood City Parks and Recreation Commission, and then on the Planning Commission. Professionally, I have an MBA in Finance from UCLA, and I have been a CPA or Certified Public Accountant for most of my career. I left the corporate finance world a few years ago, and now have my own small tax practice in Redwood City. My wife Naomi spent 10 years as a Communications Director for the Redwood City School District, and now has her own consulting business. And our sons, who came to Redwood City as toddlers, are now young adults, and they consider Redwood City their home, and they only afford, they only hope that they can afford to live here someday.
Thank you. Jason Galasides?
Good evening, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity. I was raised here in Redwood City at a time where it was affordable for my dad, a teacher, and my mom, a real estate appraiser, to buy a home, raise a family, and give us a great life. And here in Redwood City, I was taught that in our community, getting involved is just what you do. I grew up with the example of my parents and the parents of my friends, who, whether it was coaching Little League, carpooling to school, or hot gluing costumes together for the school play, everyone pitched in. Where there was a need, you stepped up and you got it done for the community. And to me, that's what makes our community special, and it's why I want to serve our city on the city council. I have a vision for a community where we have homes that are affordable, where we have phenomenal schools, where we can get around town safely and efficiently, and where our mom-and-pop small businesses can thrive. I'm proud to have served our city through numerous nonprofits and city committees, the vice chair of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. I've been a Neighborhood Association Chair. I'm a mayoral appointee to the Downtown Retail Task Force, and I'm the longest-serving current board member on the Redwood City Education Foundation. I'm also the only candidate who currently works full-time in the civic arena as a Community Relations Associate at Stanford University. Though these are divisive times, I believe in Redwood City, and I believe in our capacity to come together to solve tough challenges and achieve this vision I outlined earlier. I've had the opportunity to meet with so many residents from our great city canvassing neighborhoods, and what I hear consistently is a strong desire for a candidate who is thoughtful, who is creative, who brings a fresh perspective to the table. I believe that I am that candidate, and I humbly ask for your support in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Howard?
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Redwood City Women's Club for hosting this candidate's forum this evening. Thank you so very much. I was born and raised in Long Island, New York, the oldest of eight children, and I was working as a nurse, and I was a single mom raising my son Jeffrey, when I met my future husband at the hospital we both worked at. He was finishing his family practice residency. We met, fell in love, and got married, and moved to Redwood City, California, and we've lived here for the past 38 years. As you can imagine, I was very homesick when I moved here, so I decided to jump in right away and get involved, learn more about our community, and make friends. I served 10 years on boards, committees, and commissions, most notably the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, the Childcare Advisory Committee, and Park and Rec Commission. Before I ran for the city council, I've been an elect official for almost 20 years now, and I've helped spearhead the creation of the Downtown Precise Plan, the General Plan, and they have produced such wonderful projects like Courthouse Square, the Retail Cinema Project, a new city hall, new library, new fire station, multiple parks and playgrounds, and a very successful water recycling program. I'm very proud of our accomplishments. However, our success has brought challenges, and we must address these challenges now. What I bring is a depth of experience, historic, a perspective, the ability to listen to all sides of an issue, and my desire to work together to produce successful outcomes. I promise I will always lead in a positive, productive way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ernie Schmidt?
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to extend my many thanks to the League of Women Voters and the Redwood City Women's Club for hosting this very important forum that helps our voters make an informed decision come Voting Day. I'm running because I believe our community needs to be heard. These past couple of months, walking our neighborhoods and talking with you, many of you have confirmed that you feel that you have indeed lost your voice, and that outside interest groups have become the voice of Redwood City. If you elect me, I promise you that I will work hard to restore your voice. I will work tirelessly to ensure you feel at the end of the day that you have been a part of the decision-making process, that small business owners feel that we are working together to help them succeed in Redwood City, that you never have to worry that our police and fire don't have the staff and tools to ensure you are always safe and protected, and that you can proudly feel that you can call Redwood City home and not have to worry how you're going to come up with the next month's rent. I have lived in Redwood City for 17 years and got involved in my community 10 years ago. I first became involved by chairing my Neighborhood Association. I quickly fell in love with wanting to make a difference in my city and looked for additional ways to do so. To name just a few, I've served on the Planning Commission for nine years. I serve on a policy committee with both elected and appointed officials throughout the state of California, trying to make a difference statewide. I'm a founding board member for a nonprofit, the Latino Community Council of Redwood City, that has been active for over six years. The relationships I have made and the knowledge I have gained is invaluable, experience that I will utilize on the city council. My involvement has always come from a place of wanting to make a difference and giving back to my community. My commitment is to always find a way to improve and maintain your quality of life here, and to listen to our community and to be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina Umhofer, if you could start questions for us? And the first one is, we all know how important affordable housing is to our community. In what ways have you helped renters in the past that will benefit Redwood City if you're elected?
Great question. And obviously, as, as we all know, affordable housing is, is scarce in the Bay Area. My husband and I actually are property owners here in Redwood City, both for multifamily units and commercial units. As an example, ourselves, where I think we have, anyways, we charge very less, very, very little for our units as a person. We have $800 for a one-bedroom, $1,400 for a three-bedroom. A commercial space of 1,500 square feet is $1,200. So we live affordable housing. We live affordable rents for our small businesses. Another fact about myself is, as I had, I had said in my opening statement, at 10 years old, we were evicted. We sold an apartment building to Hip Housing, and that decision was a 10-year-old child and me coming to the city of Redwood City to make sure that those tenants stayed in their home, and make sure that small business stayed in business. So not only do I talk about affordable housing, but I address affordable housing. Now, as a city level, we, there are options, and that's where we have to communicate with our realtors and our property owners. And that's, that's the very first where it begins, but everybody has to be open to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Ready?
So I indicated that I am a community organizer, and for the last two decades, really, I've been working on helping, I've been concerned about the displacement of our residents. So here in Redwood City, we were successful in talking to, there was an opportunity for the city to consider what's called impact fees, that they were going to charge for commercial and residential new developments in Redwood City. And there, this is getting a little wonkish, but there are four levels of affordability. And so often when people say, well, things are supposed to be affordable, but they're not affordable to me, and that's because we are in such a high-wealth area that the, the highest level of affordability is actually someone who makes $98,000. So that's why people often complain that we talk about affordable housing, but it's not affordable for them. So I was successful in having the city consider and adopt a policy that would make the, the lower levels of affordability for those, for those affordable housing, sorry, for the affordable housing that, that was being considered. So there is the, the city decisions that need to be made to consider all levels of affordable housing and to pay particular attention. We have created 300% of the market rate housing in our city. Very little of it is for the lower levels. I also let people know when their apartment building has been sold so that we can help them and reach out to our own attorneys and help them with issues like being evicted and getting $500,000 rent increases so that we can be of help to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle Hale?
Thank you. So my road to Redwood City actually started with an eviction notice. Not unlike many young couples, my husband and I were sharing a rental with other roommates so that we could save for a down payment. And when we lost our rental, we came to Redwood City because it was affordable. I actually got onto the Planning Commission because I was so interested in this subject of why was it so hard to make it affordable? And I'm really proud of the work that I've been able to do over the last four and a half years on the Planning Commission to increase our options for affordability. I would categorize them in three ways. One is renter protections, two, preserving existing affordable housing, and three, adding to our housing supply. So I do support the renter protections that we passed, but with all policies, I believe they're only as good as you watch them. So that's something that I want to see us continually improve upon. Preserving affordable housing, I actually voted to preserve the unit that Ms. Umhofer sold. And so we've taken a lot of the supply of the impact fees that we get from developers and use them to purchase affordable housing that we can protect and make sure is available to people at the incomes who need it. And third is adding to our housing supply. I was really proud of the fact that I got to work on our city's inclusionary zoning code. What that means is when we build 100 units moving forward, 20 of those units will be affordable. We were the first on the peninsula to do this. We led the way. It's a very exciting policy, and it's something I want to see us use more frequently. And second is market rate housing. 42% of the market rate housing, of the affordable housing in the United States started as market rate housing. That's how you get affordable housing, is you add it. It also protects that housing for, the lower-end housing for people who need it. So those are some of the things that I've done to support renters, but of course, there's so much more to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rick Hunter?
So much of what I've done in the past to promote affordable housing, was, well, when I was on the Planning Commission with Commissioner Hale, some of those things were increasing the city's supply of ADUs or accessory dwelling units, also known as granny units, liberalizing those requirements so that people can have more opportunity to build those kind of units in their, on their property, so that they can receive some additional income while at the same time helping with the supply problems of affordable housing. Also, on the Planning Commission, I enthusiastically supported a number of affordable housing projects. The one that I think I loved the most was the Habitat for Humanity project in downtown, which is going to be proceeding soon. But I think the, the important thing right now is to talk about what do we want to do, all do in the future to make housing more affordable. It truly is a crisis, and I think it's the number-one priority in the city. And it's not just affordable housing, so-called affordable housing, which is commonly known as below, you know, below-market subsidized housing, but it's housing for all-income levels because middle-class and working-class families are also being displaced from this area. The first thing that I think we need to do is to increase supply, and I agree with a lot of my fellow candidates here, that we need to increase supply mostly to put the highest density in places like downtown and along major thoroughfares like El Camino, where the impacts of traffic will be minimized. Also, to allow some, some, some units such as what's so-called middle, missing-middle housing, which is where you can put duplexes, attractive bungalows in some single-family neighborhoods that would be zoned for that. And I also would want to deal with the jobs housing imbalance, which I think is the single thing most impacting the unaffordability of housing. I would want to bring that back into balance.
Thank you. And Jason Galasides?
So I rent, along with my partner, in a one-bedroom apartment on Woodside Road near Alameda in the Woodside Plaza neighborhood. If I were to be elected, I would be the only renter on the city council. Renters make up 52% of the city of Redwood City, and we deserve representation on the council. So when we talk about the housing affordability challenges here in Redwood City, I live through that every single day. I was a vocal proponent of the renter protection measures that the council passed, the minimum lease terms and the relocation assistance ordinances. I think they're common-sense policies that do a lot to address some instability in the lives of renters. But we have to look at the reason why housing is so unaffordable in the first place. The fact of the matter is, it's a shortage. I moved from downtown recently, a few months ago, and was just on the job hunt. And just finding a place that was available, let alone affordable, was an immense challenge. We cannot achieve affordability if we do not address the shortage. I support inclusionary zoning policies, which I like to call mixed-income zoning, which essentially means that any time you create new market rate units, you have to include below-market rate units along with that. And I think the question is, where do we put it? Where is it appropriate? I have a lot of ideas, and I would like to see a council member who proactively addresses that. I think on Veterans Boulevard, on Broadway, at Sequoia Station, these are all great locations. It does not belong in the salt ponds and other locations in Redwood City that would encroach on our open space. The problem is, there are candidates at this dais who do not support addressing the shortage, market rate or otherwise, and that's a problem.
Thank you. And Diane Howard?
Thank you. When we created the Downtown Precise Plan, it was meant to be a 15-to-20-year plan. Turned out, it was a five-year plan due to the economic surge that we had. But what it did produce was 2,000 housing units, and at this time, they're all, almost all rental, and most of them are market rate. It's not what our intention was. We have some catching up to do. When I talk to people in the community, the number-one concern I hear over and again is we don't have enough affordable housing for all income levels, but in particular, below-market rate housing. So the catching up we need to do is already in progress. We're working with Habitat for Humanity, Mid Peninsula, and other nonprofit groups to build more affordable units in and around our downtown and along our transportation corridors. We, I'm a member of the HART Group, which is a county group, which we provide homebuyer assistance so people can buy condominiums and townhomes. We provide low-interest loans so that we can do teacher housing in Pacifica, as well as other projects throughout the county. as other projects throughout the county and many in Redwood City. We passed an inclusionary housing ordinance. We have a housing element that qualifies us for home funds. We have a very aggressive plan to build more below-market rate housing for Redwood City to close the gap of 16 jobs to one housing unit, which is what the county is right now. And I believe Redwood City can close that gap with the plan that we have in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie Schmidt?
Thank you. So we did approve the Downtown Precise Plan. Keep in mind that we had the redevelopment agency around, and when that was taken away, literally in that either month before or month after, that completely blew the wind out of the sails. We could no longer ask developers to provide that 15%, 20% affordable housing element. That hurt us a great deal. And that was pretty much the beginning of the end in regards to affordable housing, especially in the downtown core. The planning commission at that time, which I was involved with -- no, you weren't yet, but the planning commission and the council were celebrating the amount of affordable housing that was going to be created in downtown, and it did not happen. With the new inclusionary housing that was passed by the council a few months back ago that brings back the 20% affordable, and the state requires only a minimum of 15%, and the city decided to go 5% higher, which is good. But there's a lot more to do. We need to create housing not only for market-rate, we need to create for mid-level income, and we need to create low income. And one of my suggestions is working with landlords. When I was on the MAPLE Shelter Committee, Support Committee, one of the things that we did there was actively try to search for landlords who were willing to provide affordable rentals to the communities. We can do that as a council as well. We can try to get a committee going and do the same thing and celebrate those landlords each year for providing such a benefit. The second thing I would like to see is create some type of social housing business model where you not only have market-rate housing, mid-level housing, and low-income housing all under one roof. And as Jason had mentioned, the El Camino corridor is a great spot for that to happen and/or other areas that are close to transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, we're going to start with you on the second question. I understand that the city budget is being impacted by employee pensions. How do you plan on solving this problem? Taxes, cuts to services, or both?
So having city issuing a tax is always the easy way to make money in a city. I would have preferred that we look for more imaginative ways to solve that problem. Taxes are very difficult for low-income families, and that's a group that I particularly advocate for. We are offering a city tax at the same time the county is offering a transportation tax. And we're just looking at increasing the bridge tolls. And the people who are using the bridges used to be our residents. They're living in Stockton and Vallejo and other places, and they are now taking bridges. Tolls are going up. We're going to be increasing the taxes. And there probably isn't any way to avoid it, having a city tax. But it isn't something I'm enthusiastic -- I'm not an enthusiastic supporter. I would really like us to look at other ways to collect money. We have a very serious jobs housing imbalance, and I would like us to consider a head tax in our large corporations or a square-footage tax in some of our larger corporations because these are their workers who need housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle?
Thank you so much for the question. This is a very interesting opportunity for Redwood City. Winston Churchill used to say, "Never waste a good crisis." And we are facing a very, very long-term pension liability. This is not something that the sales tax, which I would encourage you all to vote for, it's something that I will support, it's not something the sales tax is going to solve. This will be with us for decades. And so that calls on us as leaders and a community to think differently, to do something different and new. And I see two big opportunities for us here. One is operating more efficiently. You know, other cities are not coming to this shortfall as quickly as Redwood City. And a big reason for that is that they have gone after shared services contracts. So they are sharing services with other cities, other cities that are providing those services. We could be doing more of that. We could be partnering with other cities to either provide ourselves or to share those services. Another area is operating more efficiently. One of the businesses that I have built was a very large help center. And we could take all the pieces of information that the city has and make them available online easier or through chatbots, make it more self-service so that we reduce the strains on our staff, use more technology to get the job done. And then second area is increasing revenues. So this will be with us for a long time. We need to look for ways outside of taxes. Interestingly enough, development could be a way of doing this. It would solve for both our housing needs and provide revenue. The Downtown Precise Plan actually has created $5 million in annual revenue on property taxes and $2 million in retail tax. So developing smartly can be a way of generating long-term, sustainable revenue for our city. So those are some of the things that I would be interested in investigating as somebody who has spent her career figuring out ways of growing revenues. I'm very excited to dig in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
I do reluctantly, but I do support the half-cent sales tax that the city council has placed on the November ballot. It was a unanimous city council decision, and I think it was necessary for our city's finances. The issue with the unfunded pension liabilities is that these are fixed contractual obligations that we can't get out of. They are obligations that are owed to people who are employees who are already retired or soon to be retired. Now, if the system hadn't been changed since these employees retired, I would not support the tax because I don't want to put a Band-Aid on something that's just going to keep being a problem. But the city wisely, in 2011 and again in 2013, changed our pension system to require employees to put in a lot more of their larger percentage of their salaries, in fact, larger than most employees of most other cities. And they reduced the generosity of the pension plans. So going forward, we should be sustainable. The problem with the unfunded pension liabilities is it's a problem that we didn't create, but we have to solve because these are contractual liabilities already owed. If the tax does not pass, then we will have to, we as a city, will have to find $8 million a year of cuts to current services. And I hope that that doesn't happen. I do think, I do want to commend prior city councils for proactively taking some other steps. They created a trust fund several, a few years ago, and have put $10 million into that trust fund as a down payment toward coming up, toward addressing these pension liabilities.
Thank you. Jason?
Sorry, thank you. So Redwood City is not unique with our pension challenges. It's a challenge we're facing throughout the county. There's a civil grand jury report produced by San Mateo County that found that many cities across San Mateo County are facing this challenge. Cities and school districts, public agencies across California are facing this. So in the long run, we need to solve this as a state, and we need labor to be there at the table to figure out a solution that is workable. And where Redwood City is unique is that we're actually doing much better compared to other cities at getting ahead of our pension challenges. Like Rick mentioned, we created the trust fund that will help us pay off our obligations in advance to reduce our overall costs. We readdressed our pension commitments for employees hired after 2013. That was another great move. But the third piece of that is raising local revenues. And I definitely support the sales tax. I support the hotel tax, increasing the hotel tax as well. And I support the proposed tax on cannabis products. The alternative to raising revenue is cutting service. And this means cuts to our library hours. There are so many kids in Redwood City who rely on the library to get their internet, to do their homework, cuts to our park service, cuts to our emergency services like police and fire. And that will increase their response times and very well could mean the difference between life and death. I see my role on the city council, first and foremost, as keeping this community safe. And so I will do everything I can to make sure those cuts do not happen. And I'm concerned that there are candidates who do not support the sales tax. It is concerning that we would pass those cuts along to our residents, and that's ultimately who it will hurt.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you. We have a pension deficit that we are obligated to pay by law, that in the next five years will be $12 million annually. And this is for a problem, this is a problem for all cities and school districts throughout California, and in large part due to poor investments and poor projections by PERS going back as far as 2009. But Redwood City has been very proactive. We have six bargaining units, and they have all agreed to a multi-tiered contribution program, employee contribution program for health benefits and pensions. The half-cent sales tax will enable us to raise $8 million a year, the cannabis business tax, $300,000 to $400,000 a year. We've raised our business fees to the average of other cities, and we're raising revenues by being paid to provide services to other cities in San Mateo County, such as East Palo Alto, San Carlos, and San Bruno. The trust fund gives us the ability to better invest our money and then make payments to PERS. We are not reliant on PERS, which I think is really a blessing. It's going to take 10 to 15 years for this city to be comfortable and flatten out and move, be sustainable, but I have no doubt that we are on the right path, going in the right direction. And I believe the half-cent sales tax is necessary. We're looking for other ways to raise funds, but we are going in the right direction in order to pay off this pension liability.
Thank you. Ernie?
Thank you. So one of the things that I talked about in the beginning is, as a policy committee that I'm involved with, it's the Labor Transparency and Governance Policy Committee for the League of California Cities. And one of the big discussions we have is the pension deficit. And to everybody's point, this is happening all over. And there are cities that are even in a worse position than Redwood City is at. And I wouldn't even be surprised if you start reading about some cities almost possibly declaring bankruptcy or trying to recover from this. It's a big deal. It's a big crisis. I did hear, I was talking to the city manager for Fullerton, and what he does, and he goes back to his employees and reminds his employees that this is not your problem as a community. This is an employee problem. These are negotiations that happened prior to 2009. Part of the issue is people are living longer, you know? And it's creating, it's creating a big crisis on this deal. So do I support the half-cent sales tax? Well, yeah, I do. It was hard to justify in the beginning, especially knowing that we've done so well in our revenue with the Downtown Precise Plan. But at the end of the day, I think it's important that the community knows, especially when it comes to the end of their public, when it comes to the public safety, that you know that you're going to have your public safety officer showing up in time in case something happens. But we need to continue going back to the table and talking with the, talking with unions, talking with their employees to ensure that we don't get hurt any more further than we really need to. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina?
Yes, so personally, I will support the tax increase solely because we cannot lose or fire in safety. Redwood City has experienced growth, our residential growth, 55% since the 1970s, yet our fire has not increased its personnel since then. So for that reason alone, I will support the sales tax. Now, the question is cuts, taxes, or both? I actually like the third option of generating revenue. We have a great resource to generate revenue, and that is our waste management plant out in Redwood Shores. We can put a microgrid that not only makes the waste management plant self-sustainable, but we can grow onto that. And we can now sell back the power to our residents and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle, we'll start with you for this question. Besides slowly raising the minimum wage, what can the Redwood City Council do to increase the incomes of the lowest-paid members of our community so they can afford to live here?
Thank you for the question. It's a great question. It's interesting because this city council, this previous city council, has not had to grapple with the issue of job creation. You've heard so many of us reference that job creation is part of the problem related to housing. I was supportive of increasing the minimum wage because protecting workers' jobs and benefits is incredibly important to me. These are the people serving us every day. These are the people that allow our small businesses to operate and be successful. I think that something we could do is work more with our labor unions. And so there are areas of the community that have not yet gone through labor unionization or organizing. I do support workers' rights to organize. And I would love to see more done around childcare. We have a huge lack of childcare in Redwood City. As of 2015, it was 200 seats for infants, 500 seats for preschool. And oftentimes, you hear stories about these workers not even being able to eat lunch. And so I would love to see us look at specific sectors where we need the support in the community and see what we could do to raise those wages. Oftentimes, this goes back to and is related to rents. It's often related to commercial rents, the price of the services, and what the employer needs to pay for their space. And so I think if we can make that work out, there would be more money left for workers' wages, and I'd be very supportive of that.
Thank you. Rick?
I definitely strongly supported the city council's decision to raise the minimum wage in a couple phases. It's going to be up to $15 an hour, and I think that was the one thing that the council could do. There's not that much that the city can do to increase private sector wages other than the increasing the minimum wages. So what I see as important is making it possible for lower and middle-income people to live here. So part of that equation is increasing wages, and part of it is reducing costs. And the main one is housing, as we've talked about before. So I think it comes back to what can we do to make housing more affordable so that people who are making at the lower end of the income scale can afford to live here? And again, I think that comes back to increasing housing, increasing supply. It also comes back to improving the jobs housing imbalance. As Diane mentioned, there's been 16 jobs created in this area for every house, for every residence created. So the job housing imbalance, it sounds like a sort of a technical jargon thing. It's what's creating the displacement and the unaffordability. So many jobs are coming in in new office buildings that those employees are able, those higher-paid employees are able to displace lower-paid employees who then have to move far away from their homes and families. So I would like, I think as part of this, we need to slow down carefully, but slow down office, the growth of office buildings while at the same time increasing housing supply, because those are two sides of the equation.
Thank you. Jason?
I agree with pretty much everything that's been said with one exception. You know, San Mateo County has the lowest unemployment in the entire nation. So I think jobs produce wages, and I think that's a good thing. We do need to address the housing challenges. That is absolutely the case. So we need to make sure to have enough homes that are affordable at all-income levels. And further, I would love to see more opportunities for homeownership as well be created here in San Mateo County. And we're not talking about large, single-family homes on large lots that, you know, I'm just being realistic. I know that I'm not going to go from being a renter to owning a large, single-family home overnight. I would like to see an intermediary. If there's a condo that I might be able to own that can allow me to build equity, then transfer that equity when I build, when I buy a larger home, that would produce much-needed stability because rent is a sunk cost. That is money that you're never going to see again. And so homeownership allows you to build up that equity and, again, create a long-term, sustainable future for yourself, builds financial stability. I would like to see more opportunities for that here in Redwood City.
Thank you. Diane?
Yes, I'm very proud of the fact that not only did we raise the minimum wage, we accelerated the minimum wage ahead of the state mandate. And so I, and this city council went to, must have been about 1,000 businesses in Redwood City. We walked the walk and talked the talk about minimum wage and got some wonderful input and buy-in on accelerating that schedule for minimum wage. I believe that we are going to hire an economic development specialist, and that person is going to enable us to recruit new retail and retain existing retail and business. going to enable us to recruit new retail and retain existing retail and business as well as help with expansion for someone who wants to grow. And what I think that will do is create more jobs, and that's a wonderful thing because we could use that in Redwood City. But I think the real crisis here is, goes back again to the housing supply. There's such a gap, 16 to 1. We have to close that gap. If we build more housing, that will create more jobs. We ask for prevailing wage when people come and want to build housing in Redwood City. So our housing is woefully behind our office and our retail, and we need to close that gap. I truly believe that if we have more people living in Redwood City, companies will stay. They'll have happy employees who don't want to leave. And you won't see companies going off to Texas or some other state. They'll stay in Redwood City, invest in Redwood City. But it's up to us to build that housing and have it available for people to live here.
Thank you. Ernie?
So when you're paying 40% or more of your wages towards housing, that's obviously going to create a huge problem. And I applaud the city for, you know, for accelerating the wages, but it still ain't enough, or it still isn't enough. And walking downtown businesses or walking businesses in other areas, what you're hearing from these business owners is that they can't afford to keep their employees in there for a couple of reasons. Number one, they're moving away. Or what's happening is other corporations, and great for them, either hiring out their employees or taking the employees, and they're paying them $20 to $25 an hour, and that's also plus benefits. That's great for that employee, but what happens is our smaller businesses find it difficult to, to compete with that. And so some of our small businesses are struggling a great deal. You can call it displacement, you can call it gentrification, you can call it whatever you want, but we are having an issue on that. And it's going to come down to housing and finding ways to make sure that those that are being displaced are able to afford a home here or an apartment here and work in the city as well.
Thank you. Christina?
Small business. My husband and I own Fred's Garage in Redwood City. My husband bought from his father in 1992, and I joined in 1995. Increasing minimum wage is very difficult for a small business. When you increase a minimum wage, your workman's comp is based off of your salary. So not only do we have now an increase in our salary, but now we'll have an increase in our minimum wage. And that's something that we need to protect. It's a very cyclical system, right? We increase our, our hourly rate, but then to accommodate for our increase in salary. So that comes back to the, the service worker. So it doesn't necessarily solve a problem, in my personal opinion. When we sold our business at the end of February, we sold it to another Redwood City company, Redwood General Tire. And Alpio wanted two of our mechanics. And the entire reason he wanted them was because they lived in Redwood City and they would show up to work on time. So we need, as a city, to look at our mixed-use zoning. We need to make sure our industrial restricted zoning and our light industrial zoning stays as-is, and we don't switch those to commercial because that will take out the option to include housing in those zonings. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana?
So when we talk about minimum wage, it always goes back to housing, doesn't it? At the time, the minimum wage was proposed to be increased by the city. It was determined that many of our businesses were already paying that minimum wage that was being recommended. And so I did advocate for the minimum wage being increased at the, other neighboring cities had increased it at a faster rate, and I had recommended that we follow that example. In addition, and I appreciate other candidates talking about housing and how, how tied minimum wage is to housing. Because one of the issues that concerns me is speculation, not only for renters, where, where entire apartment buildings are being purchased and all of the residents are being either evicted or getting $500 or $1,000 increases, but also in single-family homes, in single-family neighborhoods, where someone will buy a property that's pre-1940 and then take it down and then replace it with 100% of the footprint in a, in a much larger house that's many times what it would originally cost. This prevents our young families from actually buying that house because people are coming in that have a lot more money. It's the difference between paying $1,005,000 and $3,000,000, which is what the house across the street from me is going to be charging. So I think that there, I have tools, both for small businesses and for, I have had tools for renters of residents, and I now am really happy that I have tools for the renters of small businesses so that they can be supported in our city as well.
Thank you. Rick, you'll start with our next question. If we experienced a serious community crisis, such as a major earthquake, flood, fire, or terrorist attack, how would you manage the crisis and what would be your priorities as a council member?
Wow.
Yeah.
Those functions are responsibility of our police and fire and our SERC volunteers. I would, I would rely, I would rely on them and their expertise. I think, I think our, I think our, our safety services, our police and fire engaged in a lot of training during the year. I think they're well-prepared for such an emergency and working with the city. The city council doesn't run the city. The city council does policy. So the city manager is the CEO, who would be the, the first person to, to manage this. And the police and fire chiefs would, would be the ones in charge of that. But the city council are the people who will deal with the community and communicate and let, let everybody know and reassure everybody that we're doing all we can and that things will be all right. So I think that's the main function that I would see for me or any of my fellow council members as, you know, let the police and fire do their jobs, which they will do very professionally, and we are the people out there, meeting with the community, making sure that they're all being taken care of and served.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you. I thought a lot about this question because the fires that are happening very close to us, I just remember walking out of my house soon after them and seeing the, the sky just orange and filled with smoke. It's a, it was a present reminder that this is something we need to be constantly preparing about, thinking about. It's one of the most somber, solemn duties of the city council to prepare for a nightmare scenario like this. Rick alluded to this, and that is that the most important function for the city council in a time of crisis is to be calm, to be a communicator, and to make sure that you're getting the most important information that the residents need at the time to them in an efficient way. One of the biggest challenges that we've seen with some of the fires that we've experienced is that there was a lot of misinformation about where to go and how to get help. And so with adequate preparation, we could have avoided a lot of, a lot of that, those issues that could have prevented and saved many lives. Secondly, a separate issue goes back, goes back to the original question about the sales tax and supporting our emergency services. San Mateo County used to have a policy where no police or firemen could live across a bridge. That would be, just in case of a major emergency, we wouldn't have to cross a bridge in order to get to the council, to the, the city. Of course, that no longer became possible as the cost of living's risen. I've gone on police and fire ride-alongs, and both departments tell me that their members are leaving the department to go to other departments. Not that pay better, but that actually have lower cost of living. So we need to make sure our, our emergency services are well-funded, that we're paying competitive wages that allow our officers and firemen to live here in our community so they can be ready to respond in a crisis. And that, that's what I would propose. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you. We have an OES, an Office of Emergency Services, which is a command center in case of emergency, emergencies such like an earthquake or a major fire or, or God forbid, a terrorist attack. And what we do is we coordinate with the county, and Redwood City and the county work together. The command center is within Redwood City. And just most recently, we had an emergency exercise of a major, a major event at the port of Redwood City. And the city manager and the port director are the leads in these kinds of situations. And I'm proud to say that FEMA was there to oversee the operation, and they have made now, Redwood City is going to be the lead in San Mateo County for all emergencies of a major level. Because we have the port, the deep-water port, and we're the only deep-water port in the county, as well as having all of our expertise and supplies right there. So I was very pleased to hear that. The city council responsibility is to keep people calm and communicate. That's an important job because while these things are going on and you want our personnel to be doing these things, it's our job to make sure we're communicating out to you where the resources are or the emergency shelters are and to keep people calm. So we do have a very active role. But I'd like to let you know that our city elected, excuse me, our emergency response teams in Redwood City are constantly practicing and hoping they don't have to do the real event, but they're ready for a real event.
Thank you. Ernie?
Thank you. So I remember when the terrorist, the terrorist apartment fire occurred and, and the council got, the council was getting beat up a little bit only because of the fact that they were not, quote-unquote, seeing the council out there during the fires and getting involved as they were hoping they would, they would get involved. But at the end of the day, you don't want the council distracting our emergency workers from doing their job. You want them to do exactly what Diane was saying and see, they're sitting here at City Hall or at their home, whatever, and accepting calls from, from a concerned community member and trying to keep everybody calm. But you definitely don't want them out there, in this case, the terrorist apartments, and not being visible. But they are visible behind the scenes. To Jason's point, yes, there are quite a few officers that don't live close to Redwood City, and that's a problem. Because God forbid if something does happen and they can't get to us, if it's an earthquake or a terrorist act, we need our public safety officers close to us. And again, that comes down to, once again, back to housing and making sure that housing is available to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
So I guess we can go back to the sales tax increase with this question as well. So Engine 9 is one of the most-used engines in the, in the county of San Mateo, and it's right here in our downtown. We cannot afford to lose the only pump truck in Redwood City, especially in a time of What I would like to see is, in one of these newer buildings, if possible, or a longstanding property owner, if we could offer our police chief, our fire chief, our city manager either free housing or discount housing, so they are here, so the, the heads of those departments are here in case of an emergency.
Thank you. Diana?
Great question. It happens that I've been talking to SERC members, and there, there is some concern about this very question, and particularly people who live in Redwood Shores. It's sometimes an area of Redwood City we, we sort of forget about. And so I am in the process of meeting with SERC members to have them explain to me, because this is not part of my historical wheelhouse. So I am being educated on SERC and these emergency services and, and what we have and what we need to have in order to make us safe and successful in Redwood City. The, I appreciate so much, part of the gift of this process has been just that, my ability to meet with residents and find out exactly what, what their needs are, what they're observing. And this is a good example of that, that I didn't know about SERC before. And now I do, and I'm meeting with SERC members to find out what those needs are in Redwood City, and I'm able to ask the hard questions when they're needed.
Thank you. Giselle?
Thank you. So I spent my Friday night on a beat ride-along with Officer Treadway, 22-year veteran who served Redwood City. And I spent a few Saturdays before that with Wade Green from our fire department. And after we'd gone out for about an hour, I asked the question, what is it that you really need to do your jobs? What is it that's hindering us? And there was a common theme, and it goes back to what we've talked about already. It was housing. So our police officers, on average, I asked for the average, they live about 50 miles away. If there was a situation, and we all know it's not a matter of if, it's when, they would be very far from us. The people who are familiar with our equipment, with our streets, with our community, with our vulnerabilities, they would not be here to respond. Mountain View and other cities have created city staff housing. It's something that we could do. We have the expertise, we have the land, and it would allow us to keep our officers and important city staff closer and on hand in the matter of an emergency. So it's something we really should think about. Second, I want to talk about prevention. SERT has been mentioned. SERT is actually an example of a city service that we're looking to centralize. It would be across the county, and I know there's a lot of concerns around that. So I think it is something that we need to monitor closely. But I want to talk about another form of prevention, which is investment in infrastructure. How many of you have wondered why your water bill is so expensive? I get this question at the doors all the time. I'll tell you why. Because in the early 2000s, Ira Ruskin, who used to sit at this dais and later was our assembly member, realized our hetch-hetchy water system was completely vulnerable to an earthquake. And he invested in the upgrades that we are now paying for. And if we weren't, we'd be completely vulnerable. So we need to continue to look at the importance of our infrastructure to make sure that when this happens, we're prepared.
Thank you. I'm supposed to wrap up questions around 8:10, but I'd like to indulge the audience and ask just one more since I don't think we'll go over too much time. But this is a rather thoughtful one, and we'll start with you, Jason. Have you ever taken a position on an issue, then over time changed your position? What was it?
It's a great question. Actually, in this race, there, the Cargill site is, is one of those projects that I had to do a lot of deep soul-searching on. When I first heard about the Cargill project, I saw the opportunity to have thousands and thousands of new units here in Redwood City. And I've talked about the need to address our shortage. But after learning about the project and its many, many challenges, the fact that we would lose a key ecosystem that feeds our bay, that we would lose natural protection against flooding and the effects of sea level rise, that we would see open space being taken away, taken away permanently from our residents and a potential recreational opportunity destroyed, that we would see an opportunity to restore the wetlands, be part of a, the largest wetlands restoration project in the West, lost, that we, that it would be located right next to a heavy industrial use, next to a steel recycling plant that kicks up dust every single day. I thought long and hard about the trade-offs. And as much as I want the housing, I believe that there are plenty of sites in Redwood City that can accommodate that housing. And there is no need, no need to have it at the Cargill site.
Thank you. Diane?
That is a very thoughtful question. I, I would probably agree with Jason in that there was a housing project that came before this council years ago, and it proposed high-density housing east of 101. At the time, we were having the same discussion about housing and recognizing that need, and our Downtown Precise Plan wasn't really fully baked, let's call it that. And we were really hoping for housing. So we approved the project, but I, I had reservations about the height even at that time. But we did approve the project, and the voters took it to the ballot. It was a referendum on the ballot, and the project lost. It was overturned. And I, it so resonated with me, I have never forgotten that experience. It tore our community apart. It really did. I don't ever want to see that ever happen again. Dense housing on east of 101 is not a good solution to the housing problem. That's why we did the Downtown Precise Plan. We promised our high-density housing would be focused in our transportation corridors and in the downtown. Again, I don't ever want to see this community torn apart the way it was during that time. Again, I don't ever want to see this community torn apart the way it was during that referendum.
Thank you. Ernie.
Hands down, Cargill. I came in as a planning commissioner in 2009, and I was new. I came from, like I said in the beginning, as a Redwood City neighborhood chairman, and I got appointed as planning commissioner, and one of the first things that I was looking at was this project. And it offered so much, it was like this dream thing that they were presenting. And then came the public comment. Somebody asked me a few weeks ago, why would the city entertain even looking at a project like this, or looking at any project that would have such great impacts to Redwood City? And the answer's simple, because it allows me to hear from you and learn from you about your thoughts on your visions on a particular development, the vision of Redwood City. And to Diane's point, to Jason's point, that project ended up to be a very, very divisive project for Redwood City. There was so much anger, and it was not something that I envisioned Redwood City to be about. So it was because of public comment, it was because of all the passion that was delivered on that, and it was because of, literally because of all of the divide that was created because of that development. I turned around and just said, yeah, no, this is not something that I would want to see in Redwood City again. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina.
So Cargill is apparently the topic of this question. I was never for Cargill, nor will I ever be for Cargill, and you will not change my mind on that opinion. So I will be a little bit more candid in my response to this. My husband is 52, and he worked his family business since he was seven years old. He came to me two years ago, actually, three years ago now, and said, I'm done. I am done working. I've worked this since I was seven years old. So I'm sitting at the dinner table, not expecting this conversation, and I go, okay, what do we do? And he wanted to sell. He wanted to sell the property and be done. And I thought, gosh, we're in the absolute hottest market of all time, we cannot sell. We have to do something different. And we probably went back and forth for about a year on this decision. And one day, I had an epiphany, and I thought, Tom, do you want to sell so you never, ever have to look at Fred's Garage again? And he says, yes, that's exactly it. And I said, okay, we will make a deal with you. We will rent this as a triple net lease, and you will never have to look at Fred's Garage again. And that is where I compromised with my husband on a situation that was very tough and very hard for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana.
Well, this is kind of surprising to me that this turned out to be the topic, and I can't come up with a Christina story. So I will add to my Cargill story. I was actually an early supporter of Cargill. I was already seeing many of our families displaced and having to move over to the East Bay. So I was very supportive of the promise of affordable housing, specifically affordable housing in the Cargill area. I was impressed with many aspects of Cargill and the company, and they had already donated tens of thousands of acres of previous salt ponds to the east side for conversion to wetlands. They were going to create wetlands that would have been the largest privately-owned wetlands here in Redwood City, which would be, and I knew from my own research, would be the first mitigation for sea level rise. So I was really impressed. One minute, okay. And so then I found out that the city would not consider affordable housing on the east side. And I said, okay, well, I'm done with that then. And then, over time, I have come to take an even stronger stand, where I do not support anything that would create a problem for sea level rise, which I take very seriously. So I took a 100%, you know, turn in that view. And so thank you for bringing that up. That was really a good topic to bring up.
Thank you, Giselle.
So just to take things in a little bit different direction, let's talk about cannabis. So I grew up with that single mom, and she was very strict. She's watching right now. Love you, Mom. Very strict, no drugs, know a lot of things. And so I always had a personal disposition against drug use. And I was sitting here, actually there, when we started learning about the topic of cannabis on the planning commission, because it was something the city council wanted us to study. And I'm looking at Ernie, because he will remember, there was a gentleman who came in who said, my company delivers 3,000 medicinal marijuana prescriptions every week in Redwood City. And all of our jaws dropped. And the chief got up, and he said, I would like to meet with you after this, because we have had zero calls of zero instances. At work, my husband has this saying, strong positions loosely held. And it's something that we talk about a lot at home. You can take a strong position, but be willing to be influenced. It's something I wish we saw more of in government, particularly our federal government. And this is an area where I was really willing to be influenced and to learn. And I did vote to support the recent cannabis ordinance that we passed, which allows for cultivation. And I'm interested to see what comes to us next. I was also interested to see that Redwood City residents voted for Prop 64 at an overwhelming percent. So I have more to learn there, and my mind has been opened. Thank you for that great question, whoever asked it.
Thank you. And Rick.
So my example isn't about Cargill. It's about the property across the street from Cargill. Harborview is a, most of you probably know what Harborview is. It's a large project, a large office project proposed on the site of the old Malibu Grand Prix. When I was on the planning commission, it came before us with the request to initiate a change to the general plan. I didn't, I did a ton of reading the week before, before our meeting. I tried to learn everything I could. I didn't particularly think the project was appropriate for that site, but I went to the meeting expecting to vote for it, because I wanted to give the developer due process and a fair hearing. During the course of that meeting, there was a lot of very good public testimony, both for and against, and a lot of excellent discussion among the commissioners, especially by commissioners who had had a lot more experience than I did, and a lot more history. And after all those discussions, I came to the conclusion that, no, the developer is getting their public hearing, their due process, their fair hearing, right here at this meeting. And I've changed my mind and voted against that project. Now, I have to say that the project has been revived by the city council. It will probably come before the council again. So I am not at all giving, expressing any opinion on how I will vote on whatever comes up in the future. But what I was really proud of about my action in that meeting is that I was open, I thought I was going to vote one way, but I was open-minded enough that I listened to all the testimony and the discussion, and I changed my mind.
Thank you. So we'll begin with the two-minute closing statements, and we'll go in reverse order. And so we'll start with you, Ernie Schmidt.
Thank you once again for allowing us all the opportunity to share with you our vision and our priorities for Redwood City, but as well for caring so much to be out here this evening during a time that I'm sure most of you have a lot on your plate in regards to kids and/or work. When my wife Gina and I first moved to Redwood City 17 years ago, I never would have imagined that I'd be so incredibly active, not only within my own community, but regionally, where I've been proudly, where I have been able to serve on the county charter review committee, or statewide, where I currently serve on a policy committee and vice president of the Planning and Development Committee for the League of California Cities. But the reality is, I did fall in love with making a difference for our community. This is not a pit stop to another higher office for me. This is about me wanting to give back as a council member for as long as you will have me. I didn't just start getting involved in my community two, three, or six months ago. I've been involved in my community these last 10 years nonstop. I'm one of those community members that community leaders think of when they're looking for volunteers. As busy as I am running the Fox Theatre properties, or helping organize or volunteering for another great cause or event in our city, I always make it a priority to find a way to say yes. When you really get to the heart of what the true objective of a council member is, it's to be the voice of the community. And right now, that voice is lost in City Hall. And I believe that my experience, knowledge, and reputation will find that voice again and ensure that it guides us all as we head into Redwood City's next chapter. Again, thank you for coming out, and I would humbly ask for your vote, and that you vote number six on your ballot on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Howard.
Thank you. Remember your first day on your first big job? What if, when you walked in and you asked, what am I supposed to do? They said to you, you're in charge. How would you feel? You're in charge of $121 million company with 550-plus employees. Redwood City is that company, and the city council is in charge. On my watch, Redwood City has become the most vibrant city in San Mateo County. However, as I mentioned before, with success come great challenges, and we have some difficult challenges ahead. Being a city council member has a steep learning curve. Last election, we elected two new council members. This election is going to have at least two more, and the next election will have two more new council members. So what I bring to the city council is continuity and a depth of experience. I believe in robust civic engagement, and I have a history of doing it well. When I was first elected, I said Redwood City is a work in progress, and it still is. I hope you will support me and give me the opportunity to work with the new council as we continue our journey together.
Thank you. Jason Galasides.
Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for being here, and to the League of Women Voters and Redwood City Women's Club for organizing this. This is a really great opportunity to communicate our positions. I want to close with a really basic question. What's the city council's job? Fundamentally, we are tasked with keeping our community safe, managing our budget responsibly, and delivering municipal services. We do this by making decisions with a majority of our seven-member elected body. Sounds easy, right? The hard part is that you have to balance a diversity of interests and desires of all 85,000 residents, whether they voted for you or not, whether they voted at all. This means that the solutions we come up with have to be balanced. As a city, we should encourage everyone to be part of a robust discussion. It's healthy. It leads to better ideas. But ultimately, the council is tasked with making a decision in order to accomplish a people's business. There are candidates in this race that are more interested in sowing the seeds of division that pull us further from a solution and not closer to one. Who they seek to burn bridges instead of building them, who deepen wounds and not heal them. We've always been a community that works decisions fairly and equally. After all, that's our job. I ask that you vote for Jason Galasides, lucky number seven, on your ballot in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rick Hunter.
I also want to thank everyone here, and thank the League of Women Voters for this evening. We have seven strong candidates running in this election. So what sets me apart from the other candidates? I think a couple of things distinguish me. First, my long and extensive volunteer and civic experience gives me deep roots in this community. I've served together for many years with a wide variety of people from all walks of life. And from these many years of service, I know the community, I know Redwood City. This service experience has also taught me how to work closely with others to solve problems. I'm really proud that nearly all of the commissioners and board members that I have served with are strongly supporting me, because they know how I listen to others and work together to bring people together and make decisions to solve problems. The second thing that distinguishes me is my financial experience, and I alluded to that before. I have been a CPA for most of my career. The council has had CPAs serve in the past, and that skill has been a valuable asset. I will bring this experience and ability to be able to analyze budgets and to safeguard your money. So I may not be the smoothest talker of all the candidates, and that's okay. But if you're looking for a candidate who listens to all sides, does their homework, asks tough questions, is thoughtful, and most of all tries to bring people together, then I'm your person. When Mayor Ian Bane endorsed me, we asked if he could give us a quote that we could use, and he gave us a great one. And the first word he used to describe me was kind. And that's not a word you hear often in politics. But I hope it will be, because that is the way that I intend to approach my job as a city council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Giselle Hale.
So I have to take this moment to say that 100 years ago, I would not have had the right to vote in this election, and that this year, I had the right to run. And very much that was thanks to the women who preceded the League of Women Voters, the suffragettes. So thank you for the work you continue to do. This council will face many challenges, some of them we discussed today, and some of them are still completely unknown to us. So we need leaders who are ready to rise to the challenge, whatever that challenge may be, with a spirit of compassion, hard work, and kindness. My husband and I chose Redwood City as the place to start our family because of the values. Redwood City is diverse, it's inclusive, it's a place for all ages. Those are the values worth protecting, and that is exactly what is at stake in this election. To do that, we have to do the hard work. We have to go after that housing affordability. We have to reduce the time we spend in traffic. And we have to preserve our neighborhoods. It's not just what we do, though, it's how we do it. One of my favorite quotes is an African proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. Going together means bringing the community into the conversation. Going together means partnering with nonprofits, with businesses, with everyone at the table. We will go further if we go together. As a former field director for the Obama '08 campaign and the co-organizer of the Families Belong Together Rally, I know how to bring people together from across our community to get things done and to achieve goals. I truly believe our best days are ahead of us, and I will work to create a Redwood City where people of all ages, all incomes, and all backgrounds can thrive. Whether you have lived here for two years or 20, I will be there to serve you. And so I humbly ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Reddy.
Thank you to the Women's Club and to the League of Women Voters. This has been a special night for us to get to know all of you and for you to get to know all of us. Several years ago, I participated in the Redwood City piece of the UC Berkeley Urban Displacement Study. The conclusion of that study was, should the city succeed in its economic development goals, there will be a mismatch between the housing supply and the job growth that goes against the core of sustainable development. That's where we are, that's what we're experiencing right now. In five years, we have seen the build-out of a 20-year development plan. The downtown precise plan did not include mechanisms to prevent the mismatch that occurred and did not provide the affordability levels desperately needed by our community. In my view, we have undervalued ourselves in not seeking community benefits that would truly benefit our community. We can do better. We have an amazing city staff and residents who genuinely care about Redwood City. We have big challenges, and we have the skills, intelligence, and imagination to address those challenges and do amazing things together. I'll leave you with a thought central to who I am. Of those to whom much is given, much is required. I am very clear about what is required of me. I'm housing and economically secure, and it is important to support those who are not. There are seven members of our city council. Residents deserve to have at least one of those seats covered by someone who has a particular sensitivity to the most vulnerable in our community. To be effective, community leaders need to be on city council. I humbly ask you to vote for me, Diana Reddy, so those without a voice will have a seat at the table. so those without a voice will have a seat at the table.
Thank you. And Christina Umhofer?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming here tonight and staying out till 8:30 to listen to us. I'm sure it's not how you wanted to spend your Wednesday evening. So I actually had a planned speech, and I'm going off. I'm not going to say my planned speech. So I was given homework a month ago to ask my friends of why they would vote for me. So I asked my friends, new friends, old friends, my Republican friends, my Democrat friends. And the theme that came through was honesty, trustworthy, and integrity. I'm going to touch on integrity here for a second. We as candidates and we as elected officials, we hold ourselves to the highest standard, and we should hold ourselves to the highest standard. We should not use the dais or a forum to publicly offend a resident, a business owner, a fellow candidate. This is not the place to do it. If you want to do it, do it in private, but this is not it. We lead by example. We do not lead by tearing people down. If you want somebody who has high integrity and who will stand up for the person that does not have a voice, who does not have a right, I'm your gal, Christina Umhofer.
Thank you. So that concludes this evening. I'd like to thank the candidates for their participation this evening, and especially for your willingness to run for such an important office. And we thank our cosponsors, Redwood City Women's Club and our League Volunteers. And we especially thank you, the audience, for being here this evening and taking time to better inform yourselves before voting on, before November 6. And again, a reminder to look up additional information about the candidates and the state propositions and measures, local measures on your ballot. And for any friends, family, relative that isn't here tonight, tell them that this is going to be replayed. They can find the replay of this evening on votersedge.org. Thank you very much. Thanks. I feel so bad. There's so many questions, there's all, but there's a lot of people. Thank you.